Meeting called to order, please. Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public where with this stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchere.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Ten present.
Any more morals today? Counselor Muzia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Stanley Brand, beloved husband of his wife Arlene Marquardt Brand. Stan served proudly in the United States Air Force from 1957 to 1961. Stan was a true and loyal friend to many who made a big difference to countless people by all the organizations and boards he served on with class. Stanley served on the following boards: Owl Diner Charities, Highland Little League, Lowell Pop Warner Football, City of Lowell's Disability Commission, as well as the Highland Players Bleacher Bums, an organization that raised over $700,000 for charities in greater Lowell. Our thoughts and prayers are with his wife Arlene, his son Gary, his daughter Sandra Smith, and granddaughter Carrie Hernandez, and great-grandson Angel Hernandez Jr. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed. Let us also offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber to all those who have passed since our last council meeting, as well as all the people who died in the war in the Ukraine. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other memorial? Mr. Clerk, dim the light, please. Mayor's business, 2.1, communication remote, Zoom participation, motion to accept and place on fire by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Leahy. Motion is passed. Looks like we have a full house here today. We have old friends and new friends. Before I go on to the next item on the agenda, I'd like a motion to suspend the rule and introduce a special guest here tonight by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Rourke. Thank you for that. May being AAPI heritage monks, it goes a lot deeper than the meaning of what means to be a member of AAPI. And also Asian-American, and for me and the counselors here, or Cambodian-American, to be Cambodian-American, and from the history, from Cambodia to America, we bring the culture and the history here with us. And has special meaning today when the monks from the New England area, from three different states, from New York, from Maine, from Rhode Island, they pay a special visit to City Hall, to bless City Hall, and to bless the mayor's office. So I would like to introduce them to all of you here and to the entire city. They drove here from Maine this afternoon, and they just arrived here about an hour ago. So I'd like to welcome the monks led by the venerable Sun Ruti. Please welcome. So the venerable Sun Ruti led the delegation of the monks that you see here from the three states I mentioned, from New York, Maine, and Rhode Island, from different temples. And they want to make it to be part of the history, to see what Lowell has done for the Asian community, and they're very proud of the progress the city has made. Lowell has been a shining example for all the cities throughout the country and around the world. So I welcome the venerable Sun Ruti. Can I, ni mon dai kun, mien song di ka? Song cheng.
Thank you so much, the mayor, Lowell, and thank you so much, all the members, all the council of Lowell. My name's Sun Ruti. I'm from New York State. I just come to visit Lowell, and so today I'm great honor to come here, by allowing me to come here. And so blessing, and bless all of you with the success for your lives and success in your works, and also good health, and be whatever you want to be, success and peaceful mind always. Thank you.
So next venerable, Sumpanya, he come from Rhode Island, yes. Please, Pante.
I don't know how to say. Okay, good evening, everyone. And how are you doing today? Yeah, I'm and venerable Ukau Ratana, and yeah, we come from Rhode Island. And today we just come, want to say great congratulations to the mayor of the city. It's so proud of us. Thank you.
Yes, next venerable, Prakali, from Maine State. Yes, please come, venerable.
Thank you very much. Hello, everybody. I'm Prakali Prak, and another monk, Man Chan, from Maine State. I would like to wish you good luck, good health, and successful years here. Thank you.
And so venerable, Pon Chan Nuen, from New York too, yes. And venerable, Sok Won, also from New York. We are three monks from New York. So we'd like to say big congratulations, yeah, all of yous. Yeah, we bless you all. All the best of long lives, beauties, happiness, and strength forever. Thank you.
Thank you. They drove from three different states to be here, and they drive back right after this. I would like to invite all of you, venerables, please come on this side, and the counselors, we take one photo with them. Thank you. We now go to section 2.2, recognition of the Southeast Asian Water Festival 2022. Mr. Van Peck would like to make a presentation about the Southeast Asian Water Festival. We didn't have it in the past two years because of the pandemic. I believe you're going to hear some good news tonight. Mr. Van Peck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilor. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Van Peck, my colleague, PK. You know, after two years of not having the Water Festival due to the pandemic, we're going to have it this year. And actually, this year is a milestone year for us. It's the 25th anniversary. So we're just here to invite everyone, and thank you so much for your support and all the help throughout the years. 25 years is such a big milestone for the festival, and so many people, just in this room alone, have helped to make it possible. Counselor Mercer, Counselor Noonan, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Parthi Yem, you know, I think he used to be a former staff there. So many collaborators, Chief Golden, you know, so many support guys from the police. Thank you. So this year, the Water Fest is on August 20th. It's the 25th anniversary. So, you know, thank you for the recognition, and we'd love to see you guys here in 25 years. So we'll make another 25 years after this.
Thank you, Van, for condemning the presentation. I don't know if any council have any comments or questions, or Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, on behalf of the council here, I want to thank Van Peck and his committee, the 25 years of hard work. They've done outstanding work. They bring in, you know, Cambodian-American, near and far, and some even travel our country to be here. A lot was asked whether or not we're going to have it this year, which you heard the announcement, that it's still going to have it this year and the year to come. They too need our help, because every year they have to raise, go and baking for money, $30,000 to $40,000 to bring in 30,000 to 40,000 people to the city of Lowell, in handling, you know, the business in the, particularly in the Cambodian Town area. So anything we can do to help in term of, you know, we're going to have this conversation, we're going to have conversations soon with Mr. Managers, you know, and you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the state delegation to help maybe some sort of earmark, so that not every year they have to go bake for money. Because they do this out of their heart, they volunteer their time. The least we can do is just to sustain it, to help them raise some money to do this. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, 25th year, major milestone. Outside of routine, can we make sure we get a thorough cleaning and dressing up of that area? Because again, I know a lot of it is state, VFW, but that middle strip, but 25th year, it's a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments? I should say, thank you, Van, and your committee for working so hard the past 25 years. And I know the past couple of years has been difficult, stressful for the community, not having a large venue like that to celebrate. So thank you for bringing back. Anything the city can do, please reach out to us. And I know Counselor Noonan mentioned, we'll set up a meeting pretty soon with you and your committee, and see if we can help your organization be successful this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Councilors. LowWaterFestival.org for any information, or you can see it on social media, on Facebook and Instagram, just Google Low Water Festival. Thank you again for your time. Take care.
Motion to accept the report placed on fire by Counselor Noonan, second by Counselor Rourke. Motion is passed. 2.3 citations. It is my honor tonight to present the citation to, on behalf of Counselor Janess and the entire council body, for Mr. Eric Slagle. Mr. Slagle, please come to the podium. You didn't think you could leave this city hall without being embarrassed, right? Citation, be hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Eric Slagle. Eric is a graduate of the College of William and Mary, where he earned a Bachelor of Arts degree, and a graduate of the Northeastern University Law School, where he earned his Juris Doctorate. He was sworn into the Massachusetts State Bar in 2004. Eric first began working in the city's law department as an assistant city solicitor in 2005, and served the city in that role for over seven years. During that time, he researched and drafted city ordinances, policies, and legal opinions, while also advising various city boards and represented the city in legal matters in the court system of the Commonwealth. Eric was an invaluable member of the city's legal team. During this stretch, Eric demonstrated his flexibility and dedication to the city by helping out and filling in when there were openings in crucial positions in other departments. Eric served as the city's acting head of inspectional services in 2009, and the acting city clerk in 2012. During this time, Eric's understanding, management, and abilities, and his knack of taking on new challenges in service to the city were on full display. Since 2012, Eric has served as the director of developmental services within the Department of Planning and Development. Eric has overseen all project review, zoning, permitting, and code enforcement personnel and operations within the city. Eric has also served, has served with and led several important public-facing boards and commissions, such as the city's Marijuana Task Force and the city's Community Preservation Committee. Eric's expertise will be missed by the entire city of Lowell. He is a conscientious, hardworking, and dedicated city employee. Eric's helpful nature, calm presence, and exceptional talents will be missed by all who worked with him throughout his tenure, including his encyclopedic knowledge of Seinfeld and eclectic movie quotes. He is a good friend of his colleagues who will miss him greatly. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sekari Chow, hereby offer all the best and extend the city's deepest appreciation for your dedication to the city of Lowell as a city employee, and thank you for all that you perform for the good of our city. Signed by myself, Counselor Wayne Janess, and the entire council body. Thank you for your service, Eric. There was actually another page, but I couldn't fit into this page. So and I thank you, Counselor Janess, for helping put together the citation. Mr. Slagle?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and members of the city council. I have worked for the city, it feels like, for a very long time. It's been about 16 and a half years. I am a vastly different person than the one I was when I came to the city, in lots of great ways. I started with the city of Lowell as a relatively young attorney with two very small children. And I leave now with two adult children and one still in high school, and a wealth of knowledge that I've gained from all the people that I've worked with. I've had the fortune of working for now five city managers. I've worked under 10 separate city councils. As the mayor mentioned, I've worked in multiple city departments. The city of Lowell is truly a unique place like no other, and I will greatly miss working with everyone here. This has been the best place that I have worked in in my life, bar none. And it is made that way by the people who serve the city, their elected officials, the staff who work in these departments, and the citizens who care so much about it. I feel truly lucky to have had this experience over the last 16-plus years, and know that I will never be far away, and that the city of Lowell will always have a special place in my heart. Thank you very much.
Any comments? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Slagle, thank you for everything you've done for the city. Certainly is a better place for having you been in its employ for the past 16 and a half years, and we're going to miss you. Townsend got a good one with you, and I'm sure you'll do very well in your new role. But we won't forget you here, and I know I won't forget you. For anyone who doesn't know, I can personally thank Mr. Slagle for the fact that I'm married. About a block and a half away in Whistler Park, on September 13th, 2014, Eric was nice enough to come down and perform the wedding ceremony for me and my wife Carrie. So thank you for that. I will always appreciate that. And best of luck, and don't be a stranger, and we appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Counselor Noonan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric, we will greatly miss your commitment, your dedication, and your 16th year of the institutional knowledge of the developmental service. That's a big miss right there. You know, the mayor talking a little bit about recreational marijuana cultivation and all that. You are the person to go to on that area. Now we absent of that person, you go, you'll leave us with that 16th year of the department knowledge. So I'm sure the manager is going to pick up the phone and call you if he need to do that, Mr. Manager. Good luck. Thank you.
Counselor Rourke, and then Counselor Muzia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, other than the city manager, Eric probably got the most phone calls from the council over your time. And, you know, he always gave the straight answer. You know, he weren't afraid to say no, even when some of the questions that were asked, you know, were difficult to answer. But, you know, you're a good person, Eric. You represent the city in a great way. You know, personally, I know a good person that you are, and how fortunate Townsend is. Thank you for your service, and best of luck in the future. Take care.
Counselor Muzia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Slagle, I am sorry that he is leaving, because I have very personal, selfish reasons. Because when he turned around and said it was the best place he ever worked, I was surprised to hear that, because I was one of the ones that was here the longest, that called him day and night. Can you explain this to me? Can you go over this for me? And I'm surprised that he took all this in stride and answered every question I ever had. I never ordered him to do anything, but I did ask him tons and tons of questions. Could you dissect this and explain this, and this, that, and the other? And then to top it all off, he still stayed. But the worst mistake he ever made... But the worst mistake he ever made was letting me have his cellphone number, because I didn't know he was on vacation. And I did call and ask him more questions, and this, that, and the other. So, I want to publicly apologize for being a pain in the butt, and you still liked working here. I'm very surprised to hear that. Thank you.
I echo personally, I echo all the other councilors' sentiments, and thank you for picking up all our phone calls, and now we might just call just for fun. If you could, please come through the gate, and we'll give you the citation, and the councilors, please come forward. We have one more citation. On this one, it's my honor to present a citation on behalf of Councilor Gishia and the entire city council. And the forms keep on getting smaller and smaller with each citation. This citation is for Mr. Robert McMahon. Mr. McMahon, please come to the podium. It'd be my honor to read the citation to you. Be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest gratitude and congratulations to Robert J. McMahon, Sr., for his unwavering dedication and service to the citizens of Lowell. Robert J. McMahon was born and raised in Lowell. He attended Lowell Public Schools and enlisted in the U.S. Army at age seventeen with his brother, Gerald. He later married the love of his life, Audrey, in a double-ring ceremony with his brother and Audrey's sister. Audrey, light born, dedicated her life not only as a great wife and mother, but also volunteering for the residents of Lowell, especially the elderly. Upon his discharge from the military, Robert lived at the Julian Steel Public Housing, which was designated as affordable housing for returning veterans. Robert and Audrey were then able to purchase their first home to raise their family in the Highlands. In 2001, Robert was appointed as the Labor Representative Commissioner to the Lowell Housing Authority, where he served as both Vice Chairman and then Chairman of the Lowell Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. During his tenure, he led many subcommittees and projects to improve the quality of life for residents. Ironically, in a beautiful circle of life, he was highly involved with the reinvention of the Julian Steel Development. This was a major housing authority initiative and investment to improve the lives of public housing tenants. His most recent housing commissioner appointment was by Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant-Governor Karen Polito, where he served as Vice Chairman until January 2022. Always a lifelong community person, his social and service memberships included the Lowell Lodge of Elks, the East End Social Club, and the Long Meadow Golf Club, including staunch support for the Friends of Lowell High School Wrestling Program and Salvation Army. Mr. Robert J. McMahon demonstrates the best characteristics of a true Lowellian: dedication, honesty, hard work, and perseverance. We salute and congratulate him with great gratitude for his years of service to the citizens of Lowell. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby offer our best wishes for health and happiness to Robert J. McMahon for his lifetime contribution to the city of Lowell and citizens. Signed by myself, Councilor Eric Gishia, and entire council body, I thank you, and I am honored to present to you the citation.
I won't be here as long as Eric. But it was a pleasure to be on the Lowell Housing Authority, and I think it's the greatest job a person could ever have. And growing up in the housing really makes it even that much nicer to be able to come back and help the people that truly need it. You can understand the needs and the worth of what you can do to make their life a little bit easier. And I was very fortunate. I was not the only one in the housing. I worked together with four other people who had the same avenue I wanted to travel, and we got a lot of good things done. First of all, we took down Julian Steel, where I was a tenant when I got out of the service, with my brother, late brother Gerald. We lived in Julian Steel, and it was a great place to live, because it was for the veterans returning. And four of my five children were born there. And I understand truly the way that the housing was to perform. And there was not money amount like there is today. I mean, to get a can of paint, you had to go up to my hands and knees to the paint room and beg for a can of paint to do your apartment over. So, I made it this path that I'm gonna get on the housing, one way or another. And luckily enough, John Cox put me on there in 2001. And believe me, I'd done everything that I could possibly do, working with people like yourself. And I take my hat off to all you councilors. I think you're doing a great job, too. And my friend Eric Gitcher, yeah. Thank you, Eric. And people don't understand how tough a job it is. But it's a great feeling when you do something to make people better. And you can look at right over here, 1939, North Carmen Village, the first housing in the Commonwealth, first housing in the country under FDR. And today, there's over six hundred units of housing over there. And those people have beautiful housing. And it was not me. It's not, I'm not an "I" guy. I'm a "we" guy. We do it collectively, and it's a pleasure that I will treasure for my eighty-four years. And believe me, I take my hat off to the mayor. He's doing a great job. Sakari Chow, he's a good friend. We got a great manager come onboard right now. He's gonna do a good job. And the Lowell City Council, I take my hat off to every one of yous. I believe you're all in it for the same reason. And I'm not gonna, your meetings are long enough. I got a big family here. I don't want you have to, it's such the rules to go after ten o'clock. So, that's enough here for me. And thank you very much. It's a great honor, and I'll treasure it all the way. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon, don't sit down yet. Don't sit down yet. Don't sit down yet, please. Councilor Gishia, you wanna say something?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. When you think of public service in the city of Lowell, the first family that comes to mind is the McMahon family. And that passion for public service was given to them through Mr. Mack and Mrs. Mack. And you know somewhere Audrey's holding up a beer and saying, "Cheers, Dad." Thank you for everything you did.
Please hold the applause. I think everybody wanna say something. Councilor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just so honored that this took place right now, thanks to Eric Gitcher, for recognizing an outstanding gentleman that has shaped this city through the housing in many, many ways. But I firmly believe that his greatest job, far greater than anything that he could do on the housing, was to have the children that he had, has, and shape them the way that they are, the most remarkable family. I know when they were just little kids, they lived in my neighborhood. I saw them grow. I saw a remarkable family. And when I was the mayor, Audrey one day said, "Oh, go to our place." We were going to the mountains. "Oh, stop by, we have a summer place here." And I said, she said, "The key is hiding over there. We won't be there, but just go in." I left him a citation and a key to the city. We never stayed. I just delivered that key, because I felt this was the greatest guy, the greatest family. And I'm very honored to have known them, and my children grew up with them. So, that's your greatest accomplishment, Bobby, right here. You hear me? There you go. Congratulations. You're a wonderful man.
And now the grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Stand up, young girls. I'm a lucky man, and I have a great family. They help people, they don't hurt people. And that's the way Audrey and I brought them up.
Through your example.
And that's the way it should be. And if we had more of that, we'd have a great country, instead of all of what's going on. Sad to say.
Councilor Rook? One more comment. Councilor Rook?
Just, I'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna thank you and Councilor Gitcher for bringing us to the forefront, you know, in recognition of a great man, Mr. McMahon. I'm honored to be here to honor you tonight. Thank you for all your service to the city. The housing authority is not a glamorous position. It's a very difficult one to be on, and a lot of difficult decisions have to be made. But you always made them with the greater good of the people that live there. So, thank you once again for your service, Mr. McMahon, and best of luck. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. McMahon, for all you do, and for your family, and keeping the Sacarelli family in shape when you were up in the neighborhood, yeah?
That was another good.
That was another one, yeah. But thank you. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
We'd be honored to take a photo with you, Mr. McMahon, if you could come this way.
Oh, you can. Just don't throw it up on the wall.
Smile. Perfect.
Is this a break? So, there's not public hearing, right? Number five, that's not the same as four, right? You don't have to do it in the public hearing for this?
Yeah, they are the public.
Or four and five the same as that?
Four and five, four and five, two and five.
Oh, so it's going down there? Okay. Okay.
Just open up second. This is first public hearing. You just gotta.
Go all the way to the public hearing, okay?
This first one, there's no roll call, you just gotta, after the public hearing, refer to my office for seven days.
Okay, no roll call. The other one, roll call? No, there's no roll call this one, yeah?
No, the other one's.
Okay. The room's still empty.
To the quick clerk, get the minutes out of the way, so we have to go back.
Okay. Yep. No, he's off, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. We now will continue with the meeting. The citation for Mr. Robert Bam will be tabled to next week. Now, we need a motion for Mr. Eric Sligell and Mr. Robert McMahon. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Gishia. On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it. Motion is passed. We go quickly for a city clerk before we go to a general public hearing. Three, city clerk, three point one minutes to finance, Subcommittee joint with Lowell School Committee Finance Subcommittee, May third. City council regular meeting, May third, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Leahy. On favor, the I oppose, say no, the I have it. Motion is passed. Being passed seven, we now take on the general public hearings in the four and five section. Four point one, order abandoned portion, Second Street. 4.1, order abandoned portion, Second Street. Give second reading. Open to all in favor. Open to all those in favor. Yes, please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm in favor. I happen to be budding the, the street that's being abandoned.
Would you please, for the record, state your name and address?
I'm sorry. John Lemay, 53 Billing Street.
Okay, wonderful.
Been there for 36 years, have been taking care of the, the property since I've been there. The driveway actually was there when the house was built in 1929. It hasn't moved, so it's always been there. And I've just maintained it since I purchased the property back in 88. Again, I'm just for it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Right. Still open to all those in favor. Seeing none, this portion is closed. The segments opened, all who oppose. All to oppose.
Move to approve?
Move to approve, second by, motion to, second by Counselor Robinson. Motion to refer to clerk's office for seven day by Counselor Rook, second by Counselor Robinson. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's passed. Now go to five, utility public hearing. 5.1, National Grid request installation of one Joe Pole, 17-50 on Market Street.
Mr. McMahon, you want to do all four at the same time?
Got a motion to bundle 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4 by Counselor Rook, second by Counselor Robinson. I just read 5.1, so let me read 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4. 5.2, National Grid request installation of four new four-inch underground electric conduit to property at 555 Metisack Street. 5.3, National Grid request installation of 50 feet of underground electric conduit from Market Street to service property at 630 and 650 Merrimack Street. Last one's 5.4, National Grid request installation of manhole, handholds, and two underground conduits on French and Coke Street to upgrade Lowell High School East electric service. We're now open to all those in favor.
Mr. Mayor, there's a Paulo Savla from National Grid.
Good evening, Counselor and Mr. Mayor. My name is Paulo Savla. I'm an engineer for National Grid. If anybody has any questions from the council or any of the others that may be present, I'm here to answer any questions and concerns anybody may have.
Any questions or comments from any counselors? If there are no more speaker on all those in favor, this section is now closed. We are now open to all those who oppose. This section is open to all those who oppose. Hearing none. Need a motion.
Move to approve.
By Counselor Rook to refer to. To the wire inspector, second by Corey Robinson. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion are carried, yes.
Can we take 12-1 out of order? The registered speaker here on it. Please.
Motion by Counselor Rook to take 12.1.
Yes, please.
Out of order, second by Counselor Nguyen. Motion 12.1 by Counselor Rook, request city manager work with the residents of the Fowler Road Boulevard Street and Catherine Drive neighborhoods to look at options to redesign the intersection of Vonham Avenue to improve safety. Second by Counselor Janess. Counselor Rook, you want to register speaker to go first?
Captain Paul Bellet.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Manager Golden, members of the city council. My name is Paul Bellet. I reside at 65 Elmer Street and I'm also the co-chair of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council. I'm here on behalf of Erin Quealy, a resident of Pawtucketville. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just read a short statement from her. Dear members of the city council, we, the residents of Fowler Road Boulevard Street and Catherine Drive neighborhood, would like our intersection with Vonham Road and the stretch of Vonham surrounding it redesigned for safety. There are numerous serious accidents every year. In addition to it being the only access in and out of our neighborhood, it's our children's bus stop and frequently used walking, a walking route in Pawtucketville. We ask that you meet and discuss solutions such as intersection redesign, improved signage, lighting, and reduce speeds on Vonham Avenue. Now Chairman Dennis Mercy and I went over Saturday after we did the neighborhood cleanup. And it's a three-way intersection directly across from Deauville Manor. To me and to Dennis, it was a little confusing the way it was set up with a middle island and, and the way people would come in to that neighborhood and come out of the neighborhood. Also, the guardrails on either side of that three-way intersection are still ripped down from, well, most recently, a bus accident and an ambulance hit those guardrails. There are no crosswalks for the children to get across that three-way intersection. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to submit a petition that was signed by over 70 residents to put on the record with this motion. And thank you, Counselor Rook.
Absolutely. Would be happy to accept that document.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Paul pretty much said everything relative to the motion. I know, Mr. Manager, in your former job, you were involved with the guardrails being a DOT area. They did replace one of them, I believe. But there's still a lot of work to be done over there. So if we could set up a time where the residents would actually, you know, an onsite visit. There are plenty of residents that would like to just talk about it and just to see if there are any options over there to make it safer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. The motion is carried. Any other motion to move any items up the agenda? Hearing none. We now will continue with the regular agenda. We go to six, communication from city manager. I need a motion to suspend the rule by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Musia. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members. I just want to thank the counselors for, for allowing me to do this. I'd like to take the opportunity, most of you already know this. Very happy and proud to announce that Mr. Mark Byrne, who formerly, formerly worked for the city of Lowell many years ago and then moved over to the greater Lowell Tech. But he has decided to take on the challenge as the interim commissioner over at DPW. And we want to say thank you very much, Mark. I just wanted to have the council see him. Most of you know him and I know that he's going to be here and available to answer some of the questions that some of the motions may bring up. So once again, it's just an opportunity to welcome and say thank you to Mr. Byrne for accepting the interim commissioner's job over at DPW. Thank you.
I go to managers. Thank you, Mr. Byrne, for serving the city. Any other motion to move any agenda up, item up the agenda? All right, we'll start with the, the communication from city manager with A, motion response, animal control. Any comment? Counselor Robinson?
I'd just like to thank you. Thank Superintendent Goldner, thorough report. This informational piece, as far as what to do, standard operating procedures for the public when it comes to loose animals and all that, is that pushed out in different languages? That's one of the things, because I've had some residents asking that, that were Spanish-speaking and, and they didn't understand what to do in the event stray dogs or any of that stuff. So, thank you.
Chief?
Yes, not at this moment with the other languages. And I know that Director of Research and Planning, we're working on a lot of documents and a new website and that will have various translations of documents that the department will have.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. When I read these reports, because I do read everything that's in the packet, believe it or not, you know, I'm looking for accurate information. And these reports are not accurate. They're cut and paste. There's two employees in here who haven't been a part and we have their cell phone numbers on here that were provided in a public document that don't do this out of the police department. It's just hard to believe that we have in front of us a revised sheet from 2011, April of 2011, when we're talking about these things. So, you know, when I, when I look at these things, I'm also looking at shifts. Through you to the chief. Do we have two shifts that do the animal control?
Yes.
What, what are their shifts?
Seven to three and three to 11.
Isn't one two to 10 and they leave a 10?
No, there isn't. Two to 10 was, was changed to three to 11.
Okay. When was the last time we did a rabies clinic?
Did a what?
A rabies clinic for the dogs.
I have Darlene Wood here and we were doing the rabies clinics before COVID, correct Darlene? And then with COVID, we haven't done a rabies clinic?
That's correct. We were open this fall.
And the, the other question is, we, we have a kennel that, that does the, the dogs or the animals that we get. TMs could, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, could we get a copy of that contract? Because I want, I want to look and see that the residents understand and we should have that on the website so that people understand exact charges that should be charged to a resident and exact payments. Because when you look at it, sometimes the city's picking up charges for other people and I, I just want to make sure that the city is paying with only things that are their charges and not charges that are resident charges. So I think that we should have a copy of that contract on the internet, on the police website. Because when you look at the charges, we want to be straightforward with the residents. We went through this many, many years ago with residents feeling as though they were being overcharged or they weren't being charged enough. And there's really no way for a resident, when something like this happens, to even determine what the charges are or not. So if we, if we could just get that together and if we could update this policy and bring it back to the, the body. You know, we get hand scribbled in, Chief, and I'm not, I'm not pointing at you. It's before you, you just came on. But, you know, some of these things are hand scribbled in. We have people who are retired. Their phone numbers on there, so I just.
If I may, Counselor, we, we do have a new policy in place which incorporates all the information. The information is all current. That was an, an old document, I believe, that is incorporated in the new policy with the accreditation, which mirrors the same information, but it doesn't have that, the, the other information that you're, you're speaking about. So we do have an updated, it's a police department policy. I do have it with me, so.
Could, could we get a copy of that in next week's package? Just, and take this down from the, any public documents? Because it has people's phone numbers on it that's actually in there and they no longer work. One doesn't work for the city and the other one is actually a police officer whose phone number is in this.
It's probably a city, it was probably a city animal control cell number, so.
So if we can just update that stuff. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our chief, Goldner. I'm just asking, and excuse my back, please, because I can't do both things and turn this around. But I want a clarification on, do we, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't, there are two animal control offices. One works 7:00 AM to 3:00 and the other one works 3:00 to 11:00. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
But the animal control offices are also animal compliance offices. That's true too, right, Chief?
No. So there are two animal control officers and Darlene Wood, who is here with us today, is an animal compliance officer.
Because it says that they do both, so. It says they provide, they're both the same. They do both. But anyway, so you, so we have three, three then, okay. Now, it says mandated reporting, well, it says animal control compliance officer and the duties that are associated with it. Mandated reporting of dog information to the Animal Control Advisory Committee, the city council, and the superintendent of police. Is there only reports under certain circumstances when we would get information? Or we get a report once a month or only when things arise? I don't know. What, what does that mean?
Darlene?
Sorry. Hi Darlene.
How are you?
Good. So that is actually for dangerous dogs hearings? Or if there is something that is very major that has gone askew? Not the normal, everyday, run-of-the-mill? Animal advisory committees, we do review some of the run-of-the-mill things, although with COVID, we have not had a committee put together for meetings for a while.
So we know that you are the compliance officer, Darlene. Who are the animal control offices? Is Bill Potter still an animal control?
No, he's retired.
So who do we have?
We have Courtney Wilson, who is the supervisor, works the day shift. And Melinda Patterson works the early night shift.
Okay, thank you. Because I, it's got other names and I didn't know. So I didn't know who it, who they were. But I do know you, Darlene, and I know you do a tremendous job, no doubt about that. So thank you for the clarification and thank you for the report. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Chief, for being here. We'll go to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Motion B, response. New hires and W4 forms. Any comments? Counselor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the human resource director. I just have one quick question. Hi, Mary. My, my only question is, is that when new employees start and these W4s are extremely, they're just tough to read through and to understand since the 2020 changeover from the government, are the W4s being explained to them? Because some people take single zero, they used to, and now it's a big change to them. Have we highlighted that or could we put something in there that gets attached to the W4 explaining that there is a difference between them? Please carefully read this and if you have any questions, bring it to us. Could that be added to the packet or something to that, that effect?
So we can't tell them what to take for exemptions, but, and I'm not sure, the W2s and the W4s. Here's the W4s. I brought copies with me. So on the back of the W4, and I'm not sure what happened to you as Counselor, because we make so many of these packets, there's an explanation there. So there's four pages and then the other one is the M4, which is a single page. So now we are going to add some facts to it, which is about six pages.
Okay.
So we'll put these in also. But we do, we sit with each new hire anywhere from 30 to 40 minutes.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that was my only question, is make sure that they're explained to it. Because there are people at the end of the year who have come up with some large tax bills that they weren't aware of. So because they thought they were claiming something different. And if we're explaining it, I just thank you for that.
Thank you.
If no other questions or comments, we now go to C, motion response, line striping. Any comments, Counselor? Counselor Gishia and then Counselor Leahy?
Thank you again for this report. I'm just wondering, since we, we put out the, the bid for this line painting and it says June 1st, how long will it take us to get a contractor here? That says when you can start, but I know that there's a delay in anybody coming here because it's tough to get contractors right now. So I'm just wondering what the, what the timeframe would be before we'd see the first contractor in here doing the long lines and starting to get some of these crosswalks done? Because as we pull up to some of these intersections, it's just very hard to drive. If you come Pawtucket at School Street, it is getting crazy over there. You're watching them.
You're watching them come across from Pawtucket, from Pawtucketville over to go up School Street. Someone's getting in the right lane and just taking off. And there's more than that around the city when you start looking. I'm just wondering what the timeframe is for a contractor to come in and get it done. I know we have in-house people, but there's no way they're going to be doing that.
The chief is gone. We do have in-house sign shop that can do line striping. There are staffing issues, so right now, they are, it is, you need at least two, and there's some issues with that. So, we are moving forward with the procurement of a contract to do line striping citywide, which the city, the DPD had always handled, but also to help supplement some of the work that we typically do in-house. The, because obviously the, not obviously, I shouldn't say that, the contract is, does exceed $1,000. So, it is posted with the Central Register on the 11th. It's, the bids are going to close on the 25th. I put in June 1st as a contract start date. We probably will not have an executed contract by June 1st. It's a priority of this administration, it's a priority of this council, so we'll make sure to expedite all the contract paperwork through the DPD law and purchasing. Unfortunately, sometimes, for whatever reason, it takes contractors to sign, you know, the main office is signed and sent back, but we have that date, so as soon as we have it, we'll start. My goal is to get APO open and start some work before the end of the fiscal year. That is the goal. And that's why we put the June 1st start date. But realistically, realistically, it'll probably be mid to end of June. But we are ready to hit the ground running in the next fiscal year.
I don't want any resident to be fooled into thinking that the city has the resources to paint in-house much anything. You know, you go down in front of the senior center where Broadway meets Fletcher, it is extremely dangerous down there. People, and you're talking the senior center, and you're trying to cross from DeMullis over to the senior center, it's extremely dangerous. We can do that in-house. But long lines and all the arrows and every, and the parking spots, that can never be done in-house. No matter how much we say, yeah, we have staff here, we do have staff here. But, and when we talk about the staff, we talk about longtime employees that have a lot of vacation time, they have a lot of time off, and they use it. So, when we're thinking about this, how long are they telling you that it will take to paint the city? Is it four or five days? I guess my question is, how much equipment have we put in this bid package for the, or the timeframe for them to finish the whole city?
Counselor Gishia, and Christine, if I interrupt, I think Mr. Manager might have insight to this?
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure that the Counselor understood that the aggressive timeline that was set. Because everyone from DPD, legal, to procurement, we're fully invested in making sure this happens as soon as possible. We've been talking about this for quite some time in the last eight days, but in all truth, we want to make sure that this is off and running. If it's going to be June, we want it to be June 1st, but we think it's going to be sometime around the 15th. We did start some painting, obviously, over in the South Lowell area. But if any of the Counselors have concerns, Counselor, that you're bringing up, you know, it is a very possible, it's an opportunity for us to maybe shift, because this is extremely important. But I'm going to yield some time back to Christine. Sorry, Ms. McCall, I was going to say, to talk about the actual piece that we're putting out right now, so.
So, we did a contract per linear foot, and we based our estimates on what we have, what we're required to paint through the MUTCD. So, we have a breakdown of, you know, double, yellow, white, the crosswalks. And so, we just calculated per linear foot, and then we had just typical paint, and then we did a cost estimate for thermoplastic. And we did it, the scope of work, we want it to be from June 1st of this year to the end of next fiscal year. I want to be very clear that this is not something that's going to take three or four days. This is the type of work that happens at night. We are going to have to pay for police details, we are going to have to pay for city staff to be with them overnight. So, I estimate this will be a, it will take us a few months to do everything. And so, while we are going through the procurement process, we are trying to prioritize what those high-profile safety areas are so that we hit them first.
I would say this to you, I did this work. We had to do the same thing. We had to put police out there, we had to do all this. It shouldn't take a couple of months. We did the full town of Lexington in three nights. That's with all the shadows, that's with all the parking spots. They sent out three detail crews, they sent out the long lines. So, that's my question, is are we shrinking the timeframe down so that people are forced to use their resources with us? Or are we elongating it and saying, okay, we're going to wait till the following year? You could do one a night and just send one crew. And right now, the city hasn't been done in over two years, and it's a need, not a want. And this all should be done before school starts in September. There should be no problem with getting that done if the resources are with these things. And I won't get into all the detail to it, but I understand there's tough time getting the paints right now. But I think that Lowell desperately needs this and the streets swept all at one time, but, and I thank you for that, because that's going to be a key, is getting those streets swept before the painting goes down. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. So, that was my question too, through you to Ms. McCall. About how long, how many miles or however, linear feet? I mean, I guess, I won't put you on the spot, but I just want you and...
I could, I just don't off the top of my head. But it's hundreds, hundreds of thousands of linear feet.
Okay. I mean, so I guess what we're trying to say is, my point too, along with Counselor Gishia's, is, you know, if we have to spend a little bit more to get it done, let's get it done now, because, again, we haven't done much painting in the last couple of years. All the main roads coming into the city, where the bridge intersections are, desperately need this. So, let's make sure that, you know, if we can, lucky enough to get a contractor right away, let's get it all done now, figure out where the money's going to come from, and let us know, and we'll move some money around. But let's get them in the city, keep them in the city, and get the painting done, so. I know Mr. Connor will figure it out, Mr. Baldwin will figure it out, so, thank you. No pressure, Connor.
Counselor Mosia?
You know, I'm concerned about this aspect of what we're discussing here today. And anything can be done if we have the manpower, and I'm wondering if we do have the manpower to do this. And I know we're short in the DPW, many departments, we haven't filled positions, and it seems it's very hard to hire people today. They, I don't know, are we paying up to what we're supposed to? I know people think, oh gee, what's she looking for, more money? I'm looking for a good wage. For one thing, we have a problem in the city with the fact that union gets people, get the steps, but people that are organi, that are ordinance, they're not being brought up to the way that others are, that are unionized in the steps. So, there's a discrepancy there, and there's a, some sort of an atmosphere of unfairness. So, I think we ought to be looking at that, looking to see, and I know through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, that you have gone to different departments for that particular reason as well. Before we can get a job done to the way people want it done speedily and correctly and this and that, we have to have the people to do it. And, you know, people have left through attrition, people have left to retire, people are on vacation, people are sick. And the crew is diminishing, and we're asking for an arm and a leg. And I want that, but I want to make sure that we're not overburdening the people that are left behind to do the work on a skeleton crew. That's what's bothering me. So, I agree, we want to see lines painted, we want to see the city looking up to par, but they can't, that won't happen unless we have the proper people, the maximum people that will allow this to happen, and we pay them a decent wage. I'm sorry that people don't want to hear this, but I'm telling you the truth. That's, in a nutshell, then maybe we'll be able to hire people and get them here. I don't know, that's my opinion.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Counsel. Mayor, we are looking currently right now to get a payroll, that payroll study done that you're talking about. So, we're hoping that the RFP, we'll be putting an RFP together to get that out there, to deal with exactly what you're talking about.
No other comments, we'll go on to the next item. D, motion response, monument maintenance, any comment? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the manager and Ms. McCall for this report. It's great. I think the residents will be happy, and again, a lot of monuments out there, and it seems like, once it was brought to people's attention, they got right on it, so, thank you.
No other comments, we now go to H, motion response, four-way stop sign High and East Merrimack. That was my motion. I want to thank Christine McCall and Manager for moving quick on this one, to put a three-way stop sign on East Merrimack, intersection with High Street. Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Just when this comes up for a vote, and we do put it into effect, I just want to make sure that this is going to be an extremely dangerous situation once all the new signage goes up. So, we should make sure that the road is properly marked and the signs are highly visible, because people are just so used to, you know, going through a major intersection like that. There's going to be, it's going to slip your mind to stop, even though you see the stop sign. So, I would just caution us to make sure the roads are painted properly and it's well lit and ready to go, so, thank you.
Good comment. No other comments, we go to F, motion response, stop sign Christian and Mathuen. Counselor Robinson?
It's another one, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I've seen it firsthand myself. It's not every vehicle, but a lot of vehicles with no stop sign coming off that hill. I mean, it's just a matter of one person going out too far and getting T-boned, so, appreciate it, thank you.
No other comment. G, motion response, stop sign Wright and Columbia, Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Christine McCall, for the report, and thank you for putting it on the 60-day trial. Thank you.
No other comment, we go to H, motion response, school student exit sign, Counselor Nguyen and Counselor Yam, Counselor Nguyen?
That was, took care of, I think, the next day, now that sign's gone. So, Mr. Manager is just raise his hand, so.
Good. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Counsel. That is correct, Counselor. We found that that particular sign was up, it was not a sign that was put up by the city. We can only imagine it was probably put up by maybe one of the local businesses, so we had went out there and flattened it. Is it needed? It possibly could be, but it's not, it was in the wrong place. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I even have a photo of it, so, but it was gone the next morning.
Any other comments? Here, none. We go to I, motion response, transportation engineer, Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you for the report, and I'm looking forward to, just like every Counselor here, for the next city engineer, traffic engineer, I mean. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, Manager Golden, is there a way we could reach out to UML? I spoke with Chancellor Chen today and talked about working back and forth with city resources and trying to get people over to see if we could do internships here. Is there a way that we could start that conversation and see if that, there's something over there that they can help us with, with the traffic engineer? And there's many of other areas that we could probably reach out to them, that, you know, they have resources that people would like internships that could come back and forth here as juniors or seniors in college. And she seemed real receptive to it, and said that that was something that we could look into. Because traffic engineers are not growing on trees, and, you know, over there, they are. So, I just think that if we can reach out and try to get some, talk back and forth to try to get some of these programs together, I think we could not only grow a better workforce, but also offer the university some type of service to get them real-life work experience. Thanks.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members. Counselor, that is something that we have been discussing, actually. As most of you know, we're running into a little bit of an issue with some of our summer help. So, I was actually talking to Mr. Baldwin as well, and talked to President Meehan, and briefly, I had an opportunity to talk to the new Chancellor. We're looking at, hopefully, putting a program together where we could work with the university. This is very preliminary, I'm probably a little over my skis on this, but we're in the sense of talking about how we can encourage and engage the young men and women who are going to UML to not only work here at the city, but also maybe have the opportunity to gain some credit towards their tuition bills. So, we do have some opportunity through ARPA that we're kind of exploring, whether that might be an opportunity for us to do, but that is definitely what we're looking at. And we're looking at it as early as, hopefully, this summer, so. But we've been, I've received the same positive feedback that you received.
You also, Counselor Gishia? Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody know how many applications we've gotten for this position since this was opened?
Yes, we've had less than 10. And none of the applicants met the minimum requirements of holding a PE, which is a requirement of this position.
100%, so the bottom line is, we don't pay enough for the position. Like, until we take care of that, this is going to sit this way forever. So, that's the main issue here. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Robinson?
Briefly, I know the RFP is in preliminary stage for the classification study. What do you anticipate for a timeline for something like that?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Counsel. We're hoping over the summer, but I just had a very good meeting, actually, today with the superintendent. They've put some stuff out, so maybe we, it's a possibility we can jump on that. Not sure yet, I'm waiting for the superintendent to get back to me. But if we were to do it on our own, we might be looking at the summer to get that done.
Thank you.
No other comments, we'll go to the next item. J, motion response, permitting and licensing efficiency. Is Counselor Yam online, or?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Counselor Yam, do you have any comments?
Yeah, he's, he's taken off mute.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the report. It's a great report, it's a great, you know, setup, and I'm hoping that that will lead, you know, it's step-by-step to the future of the, of the creating a portal, so people at home, business owner can not just apply, but also view where the, where the application process is at, you know, without having to call the city and law. So, I really appreciate the report, and it's a first step to, in the right direction. And so, we hope, I hope that it will be, you know, some more updating, more for us, for the residents to, you know, to take advantage of the portal that the city create in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Here, no other comments, we now go to K, motion response, pavement prevention treatment, Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the pavement treatments, I, just looking through it, and when you look through it, you see a lot of crack sealing is being done, but there's not much microsealing. And then they incorporate in that report, they incorporate on the backside, the crack sealing and the microsealing together. So, I can't tell exactly what's getting microed and what's getting crack sealed on that piece. But even then, we need to develop a better strategy at pavement protection, because then we won't see all these potholes and everything as they're growing and growing and growing, even though some of these streets, they rate well. That's normally when you do this type of work, it's to prevent future. And the cost is really inexpensive compared to, you know, repaving a whole road or cutting it down. And that's the reason why I asked for this. 11 miles is not a lot, and most of it is crack sealing. So, it's just, you know, going over. But when you look at it, we can actually preserve streets, where it will save us money in the long run so that we can actually reclaim the other ones and start reconfiguring everything and making it work, and we'll save off that money. The other thing is the sidewalk study that needs to be done. So, when you look at these things, you put them together, you can actually save money in the long run, and the upfront cost will, people will think that you're doing good roads over, but you're actually protecting them for 10 to 12 extra years.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the Counsel. Counselor, what I would like to try to do, if it's okay with you, I'd like to extend this out till next week. I didn't have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Chang, she has been out all of this week due to personal issues. So, I would like to, if it's okay with you, Counselor, to bring that back, to make sure that Ms. Chang could be here so we could have these discussions back and forth.
Thank you.
No other comments, we'll go to L, motion response, increased trash collection at city parks and... parks and fields. Any comments? I mean, Counselor, does a drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much, Mr. Manager, for the response. Great response in particular. I was enthused to see the additional barrels and also the additional Sunday collection at city parks in downtown that just started within the last week. So, very much appreciate it and great response. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, and I know the Counselor Robinson's very interested in this. Our new commissioner has taken this head-on in the last sixteen hours. We are in the process of increasing pickup times as well. We're going to be looking from noon to eight o'clock at this time and also on the weekends. We're going to try to extend it out on the weekends a little bit. I think the time, the timing commissioner was six to two on the weekends. We're going to extend that out because we know that the parks are being used at a later time. So, this is a beautification piece that each and every one of you have discussed and we've talked about. And I want to thank the commissioner very much for taking this on full tilt in the last, well, I'm going to say in the last six hours. So, we are going to make a change on that. We understand how important that is and thank you very much, Commish, for doing that. And thank you to the councils for bringing it to our attention.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, another thing that I'd like to maybe see built in as a piece to this, at least offering opportunity to the leagues because I've spoken to Gil Vigent at McPherson's and he said he'd be willing to, if he had to foot the bill or split the bill of his own dumpster because that's one of the venues that generates a ton of trash. And I think it just alleviates the problem of, you know, the city having to lug out twenty-five bags of trash on a Monday morning after he's had tournaments all weekend. So, I think that's one of the things we need to look at. If they're having tournaments and there's permitted field usage for leagues, we might start looking into requiring some kind of dumpster or something to contain their own trash. Thank you.
Through, through Mr. Manager, does Mr. Byrne want to respond?
Yeah. Through today, meeting we had with some of the division heads, we're going to meet tomorrow morning with Waste Management at ten o'clock and we need to move a couple of dumpsters. And one of those dumpsters, we're moving to is McPherson's Park. So, and we're going to move one out of La Lasher and one in because it's a smaller dumpster and we're going to take the bigger one that's at La Lasher and put it over to McPherson's. We also had conversations with a lot of presidents of leagues today and they were very supportive helping the process with, we providing some of the bags and liners and that we can help them participate in picking up the trash and making it cleaner for their concession stands and for the parks. So, we do have a plan in place. Hopefully, a lot of it's in place now and hopefully we'll have, we're going to keep continuing to make the improvements as, you know, bigger events take place. And I know these presidents of organizations tell us when events are happening and Shannon Cohen has done a pretty good job with, along with Andy Silva, of providing us some, the support with the staff.
You also said, Counselor Robinson? Counselor Leahy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add to the conversation too while the commissioner's here. I just want to make sure we have a regular cleaning schedule too because sometimes the barrels just get really disgusting. And I don't know if we have a regular cleaning schedule for them or at least once a year. We must have a pressure washer, right, that we can go around and...
Yes.
Make sure that they get cleaned out occasionally. So, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, that was one of the issues that we talked about today and simply bagging them and making sure that these things are bagged. Currently, right now, we're not utilizing liners, plastic bags, or whatever the case may be. And that does make it obviously a little bit dirtier. So, and that's part of the reason I think we're going to be able to really work with some great partners for the parks and hopefully get those liners in there and get some participation. And I know that they, some of the, some of the folks I spoke to were all, all on board. So, this is kind of a, the council's made this extremely clear that these parks and driving around on the weekends, I know that the, I know DPW and I know the parks folks, they're doing, they're doing the job because I see them empty and the next morning. We're just having an awful lot of utilization at this time of the year for these parks. So, but I think we have some very willing partners and with the commissioner making those discuss, making those points to these folks, I think that we should see, we should see a difference very soon.
Yeah. And if I could say one more thing, Mr. Mayor. The other thing is if we miss the president of any of the organizations in some of the, in neighborhoods, you know, please have them contact me or Shannon Cohen right away and we'll make sure that we, you know, they weren't, we didn't do anything deliberately. We just, you know, maybe we didn't have their telephone number or anything. So, have them get ahold of us and we'll make everything happen for them.
Counselor Leahy, you also said?
I just wanted to add and make sure that, you know, they know that the council's grateful because obviously the more you, more, there's more use on the weekend, someone's going to be out there on the weekend to empty the bags. So, people are on a rotating schedule, I guess, giving up their time to work the weekend to empty the trash for our, you know, so we can get out there and use the park. So, make sure that we, you know, say thank you to them and we appreciate their hours, that they work. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Commissioner Burns. It's nice to see you back. You remember a time when we actually had services that we actually did for the city. So, when we're looking at some of the areas now, we're looking at low-litter crews picking up a lot of things that the Parks Department used to do in your time here. And now, we're at the stage where we're handing little league venues trash bags to do the work that we used to do as a city group. Have you seen such a reduction in the parks staff that we can't do the simple things that we used to be able to do? Or have you had time to even look into it? I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
You know, I'm still trying to get my arms around that right now, but, you know, there is some, we're in the process of doing some hires over the next probably sixty days and there's some temps coming in. So, I think that we will come back to speed a little. I know the guys up there, I've met them, the managers met them. They, we, I think they're enthusiastic. They're motivated a little, but I think we'll make some leaps and bounds with some improvements and, you know, as long, I know there's equipment coming through the capital outlay plan that was done. So, we're just waiting for some things to make it happen and I think we'll be okay. And we're going to give it everything we got to make sure that we support the services that are needed for the parks and neighborhoods, whatever they need, we'll try to help them out.
Two, two things that you see that are extremely important to be successful is that the hiring process has to be something that we look at and we're looking at these employees for long-term commitments and long-term employment. So, I think the hiring process is a major piece to what we do. But one of the other things is when you were here years ago, the expectation used to be if you drive by something, repair it. If you drive by something, write it down. Don't just drive by it. Today, we see trucks and I won't pick out one department or another, but they drive by things that are easily fixed or easily reported back. And we're not reporting things back. We're just driving by and hoping that someone either doesn't notice it or the next guy will fix it. And I think that's the expectation that we're missing. You know, we go over and we cut a lawn at Calery Park. We see the barrels are overflowing, but we just drive away rather than calling someone, "Hey, you better get over here. The, you know, the barrels are overflowing." So, I think that that's the expectation that's really missing in a lot of ways. For counselors to get calls every other day about this stuff is really time-consuming for everybody and it's not really a good service. And I'm glad you're back because you remember those times where, you know, that was the expectation was if you drive by something, you know, come back and let somebody know so we can get it fixed. And I thank you for your efforts and I hope that you can bring back some of that pride to that, that force that, you know, you'll get recognition if you do something good and that we will. We're certainly looking into wage studies to try to get these guys paid and these ladies and we're certainly trying to get these things done. But at the same time, I don't want to pay people either who don't want to work.
You also said, Counselor? Counselor Rook, you still want to make comment? You also said, did I see your hand up earlier, Counselor Mosier? Or you also said? Here are no other comments. We'll go to the next item. Motion response. Volunteer at firehouses. Any comment? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. So, this is something that's been on my mind for a long time and I guess who would have some answers, I guess. So, what I wanted to do at first is ask the fire chief if he could spend, say, five thousand dollars per house and just hire people to paint the garage doors or the entrance doors or just fix a couple of windows, just to get the firehouse looking a little bit better. Doesn't have to be perfect. We're not looking to do a whole roof or facade, but just paint the garage doors if they needed to be painted or the doors. And then with this motion, you know, maybe we get people to volunteer just to paint a couple of doors, just to fix a couple of windows, just to help out raking up, cutting the grass, you know, whatever each firehouse needs. You know, we can't renovate them all, but we can put some effort into it. So, that's what I was looking for. And I didn't know if, if, can we just find out if someone wanted to paint the High Street Firehouse doors? Does a city union person need to be there the whole time? Does it have to be done during the week? But most people would volunteer their time on a weekend. So, what if you wanted to volunteer on the weekend to scrape the door, paint the door? So, these are the questions I'm kind of looking for the answers for. So, that's, you know, just to put a little bit of community effort into our firehouses. So, that's, that's what I'm looking for. So, if we get a little more information on this, that'd be great.
Mr. Manager, does anybody want to reply from your staff or Madam Solicitor?
Sure. The, pursuant to the response that you, that you received, Counselor, the, if the work is going to be volunteer work, then there wouldn't be a requirement for the, any of the city employees to be there.
It wouldn't?
It would not.
Okay. And then who would pay for the materials? Like, would the city just provide a couple gallons of paint and we could get volunteers to do it? Or is it all considered a gift and you'd have to buy materials?
No, I mean, there would be flexibility about that. If the, if the gift is limited to the service, then it would be up to, up to the city manager and, and paint and supplies could be provided. And sometimes, particularly in some of the fields, it has been both the materials as well as the labor that was gifted to the, to the city.
All right. So, if we could work with the chief maybe just to put together a list of simple, small things that would make a few improvements, that would be a great thing. I, I don't really know how many firehouses we have, but I know Counselor Rook would love to go out and paint a couple of doors with me on the weekend. So...
We have a painter on the, we have a painter on the council, Mr. I'm sure he volunteers his services.
Yeah, we talked about material.
He could buy the paint too, yeah.
Yeah. We have a, you know, that's volunteer, but could we have some donation of paints from Leahy Painting? Would that be possible?
If you want the doors pink and blue and purple, sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. As far as the unions go, I negotiated that piece and that's a CBA, I believe. And with work like this where we have one pretty much titled painter on the books, out of respect, it's a matter of identifying the work that you want done, spelling it out and reach out to them. Sit down for a conversation. It's, the majority of the time, the unions aren't going to push back, provided you sit down, show them the respect because it is their work after all, designated work, and, and just tell them what you're trying to get done. And, and I mean, I've seen in the past when I worked, I believe, with Counselor Gishia over at the Water Department and he sat down, he talked to the unions and, and he was able to paint the hole inside of the Water Department with no objection. So, again, I, I think that conversation, taking that initial step, bringing people to the table to try to hash this out, it goes a long way. It's, it's the problems really stem from ignoring the people that are tasked with the work Monday to Friday and they're sitting home while volunteers are coming in and doing their work. So, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counselor, those offline conversations, and I say very offline conversations, have happened and in some instances, people were looking for the help if we were to do something. They, you know, in some instances with even picking up trash, discussions were like, were talked about that to try to get some of the heavier stuff done. And once again, offline discussions with, with employees, with the workforce, they were, they were more than excited just to, as you say, be respected to say, "We're thinking about doing stuff like this. How can we help?" So, you're absolutely correct and with the respect. And we will be talking with the unions at length on a whole host of issues, hopefully what's, what's coming up in the, in the coming months. So, you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Here are no other comments.
Thank you.
That's it for motion. Counselor Nguyen?
Do you want a motion to respond first? I was going to say that, Mr. Mayor, that to bundle six point two and three together.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we have gone through motion response A through M. Now the motion to accept and place unfilled by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Nguyen. On favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Motion by Counselor Nguyen to bundle six point two and six point three.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mosier. Six point two, communication resignation of Russell Pandres from Planning Board. Six point three, communication resignation of Zo Zineku from Election Commission. Any comments or question? Counselor Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, through you to the managers, ask managers to send a letter of thank you for both of the individual service. That's all.
No other comments. On favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Now go to six point four, communication. City manager requests out-of-state travel, one LPD, one HHS. Any comments or question? Motion to approve. Motion by Counselor Nguyen, second by Counselor Rook. Roll call, please.
Counselor Robbins?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Ten years.
Seven votes from the city manager, seven point one vote, transfer one hundred fifty thousand. Fire, way for reading and second reading by title. Vote to transfer funds to satisfy operating expenses in the fire department for the remainder of fiscal year 2022. Any comments or question? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Nguyen. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nguyen?
Yes.
Ten years.
We now go to eight ordinances from the city manager. Start with eight point one. Ordinance, amend fee schedule, custodial fee. Motion to refer to public hearing on May twenty-four, 2022, at seven PM by Counselor Yam, second by Counselor Janess. On favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. Eight point two, ordinance, create position and salary for cadet. LPD. Any comments or question? Counselor Gishia?
Through you to the manager. What happens after two years when the funding is gone?
Mr. Manager?
This is a program, I think, that the city is going to, we're hoping in the, in the next two years, this is something that we're going to want to continue. This is absolutely, we feel as though, looking at this from this perspective, this police cadet program could give us opportunities that we may not have right now. And that's just reaching into different communities to find out if this is a, a position that would be good for maybe somebody that's not doing well on an exam. So, when this is completed, I believe that, I truly believe this would be something that we'll want to continue, but we can assess it at that time, Counselor, as well.
Thank you.
No other comments. Need a motion to refer to public hearing on May twenty-four, 2022, at seven PM by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess. On favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. We now go to nine resolutions. Nine point one, resolution, Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Day. City floor and city law resolution. The city council of the city floor wishes to go on on record to declare April seventeenth in the city floor as Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Day. Any comment or question? Hear none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Noonan, second by Counselor Rourke. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott? Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchi?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Ten years.
Mr. Clerk, my apology, Counsel Rourke, was, was Counselor Noonan, Counsel Yem brought a motion. Could I have Counsel Yem be the second on that motion? Thank you, so, Mr. Clerk, please amend Counsel Yem to be the second on that. Thank you. Because Counsel Yem was not here in person, it's hard for me to see him. Ten reports, subcommittee, ten point one, subcommittee report, finance subcommittee, joint with school committee, finance subcommittee, May third, twenty twenty two.
That's, that's Counsel Scott's subcommittee, so we'll just remove that from the agenda.
Okay, transportation subcommittee, May ten, twenty twenty two. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening at five thirty, we had Transportation Subcommittee. The subject of the, the subcommittee was electric vehicle charging within the city of Lowell. I was joined by my co-members and the chair of the subcommittee, Counsel Noonan and Counsel Janess, also Mayor Chow, Counsel Mercia, Christine McCall, DPD Director, Kathleen Moses, Energy Director, and Terry Ryan, Parking Director. The main discussion that occurred was the availability of, of charging stations, how far the city has come, how much further we have to go, discussed opportunities. Also was mentioned that it's, as of now, it's free to, to charge an electric vehicle, but that will be changing in the future, you know, due to hopefully more electric cars being purchased, and then obviously the cost of charging a vehicle. Multiple people spoke about it, spoke in favor, you know, within, I think, thirteen or fourteen years, they expect over thirty percent of vehicles on the street to be electric. We talk about the upgrades to the parking garages that are going on at both John Street and the AR garages, that are going to have also extra charging stations and upgrade on those ports. Peak usage of charging times in the city is seven AM to two PM, and there's a four-hour max charge. Parking Director Terry Ryan spoke about, hopefully, some kind of system that could be put in place where a car does not just park there in the morning and stay there all day and night. Those are things that him and his department are talking about. All in all, it was very informational. A lot of questions were asked, and I'm sure it'll be something that we'll be revisiting again in the future. If Counselor Noonan would just want to speak on it, I'd be glad to, to hear them as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Noonan, do you have anything to add or?
Colonel Mossad, thank you.
Any other comments or question? No other comments on the report. Need a motion to accept report as reports of progress by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Mercy, on favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. We now go to eleven petitions. Eleven point one, claims to property damage. Any comments or questions? Hear none. Motion to refer to law department. This is something relevant to us. So motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Counselor Janess, second by Counsel Robinson, on favor of the eye opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. I believe item eleven point two has been withdrawn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, per, per request of the petitioner.
Good, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Eleven point two has been withdrawn. We now go to city council motions. We already have taken up twelve point one. We will start with motion twelve point two. Twelve point two, Counsel Gitchi, Counsel Scott, request city manager have the proper department work on providing services to the homeless on Plain Street and Target Plaza and providing a timeframe for removal of the tents. Is Counsel Scott online or?
No, she's not.
So we need a second by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Gitchi, any comments?
I do. This is obviously a touchy subject throughout the whole city. We, we've seen a lot of emails about homeless camps throughout the past few months, and as we start looking at these homeless camps, we're starting to see it's affecting businesses. You got Target down there, you have the car wash, and, you know, we, we got, all of us on the council have received multiple emails about being approached at Target by family members, or being approached by people asking for money. It scared young children. So there's some things we have to do better, and, and, you know, we're asking that we put a policy together for some outreach, you know, like, like Boston put in place. Let's put outreach, and if it doesn't, if people don't want to do it by a certain date, then we need to remove. But this area is really concerning, and, and so is along the Merrimack River. These are protected areas that we're just like looking the other way. The EPA, the DEP, we just keep looking the other way. And, and I'm not sure why we're not in contact with them about these areas, but when you look up CMR three ten, and, and you start reading through it, you'll see a ten point two, protected areas along creeks, rivers, streams, ponds, riverfront areas, and when you start engaging in it, it, it starts talking about human body fluids that are being left there. We got generators down there. And, and it's just disheartening that we're, we're pushing wildlife away from it into the neighborhoods. We have protected areas that are down there that have trees that are being cut down at will, and, you know, at, at some point, somebody has to say something and say, okay, here's the social services that are being offered. If you don't want to take it, then we need to come in and clean it, because these are gateways to our city. You have rowing crews from UMass Lowell, they have a whole thing down there, they got to look across the river at this big hut that if you and I built something like that in our backyard, inspectional services would be in telling us, see you later. And, and they're walking our neighborhoods, and when we look at it, we're saying, are they willing to take social services? Can we reach out to them and, and try to help? I know nobody wants to have this discussion, but at the end of the day, when we start looking at it, you know, we're invested in our city, and I'm invested in the homeowners also. They have rights. They have rights to have a clean city, like they're keeping, taking care of their properties. So I, I think it goes back to the early nineties when Ducac has cut all the mental health care, but, you know, when we start looking at it, we have to treat it like Boston did and come out off of the social services, put a policy in place that's serious, and take down the stuff and start cleaning the area, and putting it back to its wildlife nature that it was along those streams and brooks in the river. It's, it's really not a good look for any of us, and, and I'm as a, I have a heart, too, like everybody else, but when, when you go on even our Conservation Commission webpage, the thing isn't even updated. It still says that city hall is closed to the public. So do we really man these things? What are we doing? And have we reached out to DEP, the EPA, and said, okay, we need your resources to help us get these areas back to their natural habitat that we're sending all of these species back into our neighborhoods, these animals and everything else, and then we're cutting down trees that, that are protected by, by the acts that are before us? I thank you for listening, and, and I do ask that we do some outreach before we just take down, but I think we need a timeframe in taking down and how long it will get to get that outreach to, to these individuals. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson and Counsel Mercy?
Thank you. I'd like to also echo a lot of sentiment that Counselor Gitchi just brought forward. I get tons of calls about the encampment along behind the Dog Park by Hunts Falls Rotary over in that area. I drive the boulevard to work every morning, Harrods Ice Cream, you look across, seems like it's growing. I mean, again, we need to provide services, and I think those that refuse or, or don't want to take up the opportunity for the services provided, we need to figure out a plan, because these encampments are getting larger and larger and larger, and, and again, hazardous waste, human waste, syringes, all this stuff. It, it's, it's on the banks of our river now. We're spending good money on treatment. We have a public beach not far from where the large encampment over behind the DPW is. So I mean, we need to really start looking at what are we doing to our environment as a result of not having the answers. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy and then Counsel Rourke. Counsel Mercy?
I want to just tell you about a new scenario that's happening where people are always thinking, how can I save a buck? So what they're doing now is, how do I get rid of this sofa? How do I get rid of this recliner? So they're bringing it over to Summer Street, and they're giving it to the homeless, and they're sleeping on these things at night. So someone that should pay a fee to get rid of that, that piece of article or furniture in front of their house, they don't have St. Helier's Car Wash to dump it in the Planet, Planet Aid box, so put it aside of it like they want to give it away. So instead of paying the fee to have waste management come down and take it away, they're putting it at the park, saying, oh, they'll use it, and, you know, it's just amazing what goes on. And I'm going to say something, because I don't know how to solve this, really. Everything that was said is true, and it seems like we're just heartless. But we're not heartless when you think about the people that are on the street. A lot of them are mentally ill, and they need to be on medication so that they can function properly, but there's nobody that can monitor them, so they're left astray. You have Solomon Mental Health closed down, Danvers closed down, you get all these places that closed down. So where are they supposed to go? Families can't handle them anymore, put them out in the street, and they're our problem now. But I remember when I was a little girl, I maybe said this before, so I know I won't say it again, but, and I, you know how we say history repeats itself? Well, history does repeat itself, like the bell bottoms come back again. Well, I remember that on Chemsford Street, there was a, a stairway, a set of stairs, a stairway to heaven. Well, in that immediate area on Chemsford Street was what they call the poor farm, and people that were indigent and had no place to go, stayed there. It's a shame to say that we have had such a thing, but it must have served a purpose. And maybe we need one of those again. That's why I'm desperately looking, oh, the Coca-Cola plant or the Pepsi plant or whatever it was on Industrial Avenue, is there, is there a facility that someone can buy and put the people in there? Not to say, get them off the street, we don't want to see them, but to help them, because they need, they need some type of help. I know you won't get everybody in such a place like that. There's people that want to be outside, but, but I'm thinking, how, how do we help these people? I don't know. I, I mean, I thought we'd have a summit and we could put our heads together. I know CTI and all the different organizations are doing everything that they can to get them into housing, get them somewhere. I know that there's a facility in the city where they put a person that was mentally ill in with elderly, and that didn't work out at all. No one was monitoring this person that was twenty-five years old, that was in with seniors in a, I know, I don't want to say where it was, but it was in Lowell in, in this facility that was elderly housing. It wasn't the housing itself, it was a private entity into this housing complex, and it didn't work out. So you need people similar to be used to each other to, to help them, so that someone could monitor their medication. I don't know what to say, I don't know what to do. I'm thinking if we had a summit and we could put our heads together and try to figure out a, a plan, it, it's very difficult to talk about, but I'm just trying to figure out what we can do. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Ma, Mr. Manager, you probably don't know the answer to this, but any idea that the last cleanup we had with the homeless camps, I don't know if Christine McCall is still here or not, but I know, I mean, a couple of months ago, we did a cleanup throughout the city, you know, trash bags were placed along the river, and they were picked up, and is there any schedule for doing it again sometime in the, in the future, maybe?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counsel, yes, we have been discussing this, and we're, we want to make sure we're taking the appropriate steps to make sure what some of the councils were discussing is ensuring things are, are granted to the, the homeless folks, to make sure that the services are appropriately offered. Some of these places, I do know that I have driven around, some, some of the aspects that, some of the locations are actually on private, private land. So I have made a few phone calls to make that happen, and those cleanups are ready to go. I think the, the easier part, well, when I say easy, I want to be careful with that. I think the part that we truly understand is the cleanup part. The city's done a very good job at that. I know that Lowell Litter Crew has done some of the cleanup there as well, but I think the, the most humane thing to do is to make sure that the services are available. That's the portion that we're working on in the beginning before this happens. This has been something that I, as well as many of the councillors, have received the emails that we all receive, but I think, I do firmly believe that there needs to be a new threshold, and that threshold is something that isn't allowed. Some of the encampments is not something that we, that anybody in the city should tolerate, but it's something that we're going to have to deal with in the, what I would like to say, in the next couple of, couple of months. I want to make sure that we reach out to the appropriate folks who can provide services to these folks before we actually get in there. So it is something that the administration, my administration's been, been talking about, working on, and once again, I'm not so concerned with the, the last portion of the cleanup, I'm concerned about the first portion, and that's to make sure that the, the, the services are there. So we will be working towards that, and I look forward to dealing with this motion very, very soon, in the next, in the next coming weeks.
Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe what I'm about to say is within the spirit of the motion and in the spirit of what Manager Golden just mentioned, but I do want to, you know, to, to be clear, I think it's important that services are, are offered to the individuals who are currently residing in these encampments, but to be just a little bit more, more direct about it, and to take the approach that I know the city of Boston took, is that there is actually housing offered to these individuals, at, at least a stable place to sleep and where they can hopefully make the transition into stable housing. So not that just we're, we're offering services, but that we are working to provide an alternative in a better place to sleep for these individuals before that they're provided with in, in order to, to vacate the encampment or where it's come, we come in and clean it up. And that is the compassionate thing to do. I, I really do believe that compassion here isn't, you know, looking the other way and doing nothing, because we can do much better than, than allowing these individuals to, to continue sleeping outside in, in the elements. There are also, you know, public health and, and public safety implications here that we, that we need to be aware of, so I do just want to be, you know, clear that, that I think not only do we need to, to talk about services that are available, but really be very intentional about providing them with, with alternatives that will approve, improve upon their, their current situation, and if they, you know, are not availing themselves of, of those services that are, that are being offered to them, then I, I think we do need to, you know, address those, those issues of, of public health and, and public safety, but just want to be very clear here that there are alternatives that will be, will be offered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Gitchi?
I agree with everything that's being said, but there has to be a timeframe. At some point, we talked about small businesses and businesses in this city going out of business because of COVID. We either need to put our police station in Target's parking lot, or we need to do something within a short period of time. Target's one of our only places that we have a large merchandise like that, and when you start watching what's happening down there, we're getting the emails, we're all getting these things telling you from residents who are scared to walk back to their car. Do you think they're going to go back there? So that's, that's the thing, it's timeframe sensitive, because we really need to support our businesses. We all talk about that during the opera stuff and them going out of business, because people wouldn't go there because of the mask mandates and everything else. This is triggering small businesses even further, and, and it's putting a burden on them that- that they're not going to come back from. So it's going to be hard to manage that and I just want to make that point that I understand that we need to get the services offered, but at some point we have to get moving. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, this motion is carry. 12.3, Counselor Nguyen, request city manager restart discussion with the DPD about the feasibility of forming a downtown business improvement district. Where end members contribute to a fund that in turn benefits the district, similar to the Community Preservation Act, second by Counselor Janess. Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that we looked at this. I know that many years ago, city have, city and the business in the downtown have some discussion around this, the business improvement district. The idea is similar to, like I said, CPA, where you have to have the business community buy into it and you can actually, you know, define the district, you know, with talking with the businesses owners in the downtown area. Say, define it from Market Street to Mamak Street. And then, you know, those are the area that in addition to paying, say, 3% of taxes, you give an additional percentage to it. And that money is not for anybody's use. That money, and then what you do is you create a committee. That money is being used for the business improvement district in the downtown area and those defined area that you agree to by the business in the downtown. It can use for a number of things. It can use for beautification of the downtowns through, you know, put a flower, flowering on these Victorian light poles, make it look beautiful. And also can be used as marketing tool for the downtown or that business improvement district as well. But let's restart that conversation, you know, and see if the business in the downtown area will agree to call a meeting with them and see if we can do something around that area. This is, you know, I think this is, will be great for the downtown and if we can have a business improvement district there. So, you know, I'm waiting, I'm looking forward to the report from Christine McCall and Mr. Manager Golden and the business community in the downtown area on this.
Any other comments? Counselor Leahy?
Just, Counselor is correct. So this was brought up a few years ago and Attorney Michael Gallagher was very helpful, Counselor Kennedy, so there'd be some good resources to reach out to again. Thank you.
Hearing no other comments. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, the motion is carry. 12.4, Counselor Nguyen, request city manager work with appropriate department to improve appearance of downtown ahead of the Lowell Folk Festival by cleaning the streets and repainting light poles and other similar structures, second by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I just add one other thing, the graffiti removal on that area, the downtown areas as well. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Kishia?
Through you to the manager. Manager Golden, twice tonight, we heard about events that are coming to the city that we have to remind the city to try to take care of the areas. In the past, departments would drive the areas before these events. If there's events there, they would make sure everything was up to what their expectations were and we wouldn't have to go through this at the council level. So if we know there's an event, the week before, just drive the route. When we did the firefighters memorial, the trash was overflowing. Everything was just a complete mess. So I just think that we shouldn't have to put notification into the city to do these things. It should be an expectation from management to say, look, this is coming. It should be sent to all of the department heads before the events are there and do exactly what Counselor Nguyen is asking should be done without him having to even put these forward. But I do think it's a great motion, but this is twice tonight we heard about the same thing, events coming that we should be upfront about. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. Counselor, you're absolutely correct. Looking forward to answering these. This is something we've been talking about and I do want to bring the commissioner, not the commissioner up, but this is something we discussed. We have, UMass Lowell commencement this weekend and we were already talking about, you know, the beautification of coming into the city. Mass DOT has already been called. So between 12.4 and, sorry, Counselor Janess, 12.5, we're looking forward to getting these answers because this is stuff that we have been actively working on to get that done. But creating this calendar of sorts, if you would, that we know. I mean, we do expect that the city should be clean, but sometimes when we're having an influx of folks coming in, I always think of Dutton Street. We spoke to UMass, I spoke to UMass today. I'm going to be talking to MCC and then Lowell about something with, it may not sound right, but, you know, flags coming in. So if, you know, if people are coming in on Saturday, we cannot have this done. I just want to be clear. UMass Lowell could not get this done. But, you know, if we're talking about UMass Lowell having a commencement, well, let's be proud of the university and we're welcoming our students back with UMass or MCC or Lowell High. Let's be proud and make sure that the downtown is, I want to say, littered in a good way with, you know, pride for UMass, pride for MCC, pride for Lowell High during when the kids are coming back to school. And yes, of course, heading out to the Greater Lowell Folk, maybe we can have something along the boulevard as well. But those discussions are actively happening.
Hearing no other comments. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to motion 12.5. Counselor Janess, request city manager have proper department provide update status and timeline for the Central Street Bridge replacement project, second by Counselor Mosier. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Last time we got an update on this, we were told the steel was due the end of May, early June. Just looking to check in and see if that timeframe is still applicable and what we're looking at for project timeline going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Motion 12.6, Counselor Janess, request city manager have proper department install public trash barrels in the Hamilton Canal District, specifically at the intersection of F and G Streets, second by Counselor Nguyen. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. As the weather's getting warmer, I'm seeing more and more people out walking, enjoying this space that, you know, has really been newly created. The barrels that were in what was the National Park Lot, those are gone. Since the city took them over, the National Park has removed their barrels. More people are out walking dogs, particularly from 201 Canal. There's a lot of residents that are out walking around with their dogs. So if we could have some barrels placed in that area, I think it would go a long way to keeping that area looking nice as we move into the warmer months. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Motion 12.7, Counselor Janess, request city manager extend an invitation for a representative from Clifton Larson Allen to attend the personnel subcommittee discussion regarding next steps on the DEI officer position and overall HR roadmap implementation, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we go into this discussion tomorrow night, I think it would be, it would behoove us to have someone from Clifton Larson there to help us with this discussion as we look to either make changes to the roadmap or the position description or anything going forward. I think they have a lot of input that would be valuable and, you know, there was quite an outlay from the community to get this audit done in the first place. And I think it's, they can be an important partner to us as we move forward with continuing to implement it. And that discussion tomorrow night would be an important time to get input from them, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members. I don't want to get into a habit of answering these, but since it is tomorrow, I just want to let you know, we have reached out to them. They've had some personnel changes. That's, might be difficult. They're working on it. But the gentleman that had completed the report, it's my understanding, is no longer working there. So we are trying to get somebody there and the only reason I want to set expectation on that is we're actively working on that and I'm not, I'm not quite sure it's going to happen. We, Counselor, I do appreciate you giving me that heads up and we did try to make that call, but that's what we're finding out right now.
Okay, thank you for that. In light of that information, I don't want to delay the meeting by any stretch, but if the, if the, you know, councillor who made the motion to have this meeting would like to move it in light of waiting for Clifton Larson availability, I think that, that may have some value. But I'll leave that up to whoever made the motion for that. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Kishia, second by Counselor Robinson. Are you on discussion?
I just want to talk on the point.
Just talk, not a motion. Counselor Kishia, go ahead.
The meeting was put together to discuss DEI officer. So the whole Clifton Larson report was not centered around one piece. It had multiple pieces to it and I agree. But we can start the discussion along with, before we get into the Clifton Larson report, which to me is garbage anyway. When you look at that report, there's 1,039 employees in the city, 884 were reached out to and of that, only 30% of the city even participated in this whole thing. And then we didn't talk to one employee except for management to even discuss anything about it. So when I look at that, it has good points to it, but I think some of the points in that whole thing, you wouldn't build a bridge by the percentages that were done within this report. So, and I think this is a bridge to our employment history. So I think that, you know, starting the discussion tomorrow is important. And then if, you know, Counselor Janess is agreeable to, you know, having them in after the discussion warrants bringing in somebody, I think it would be a great idea and I think we can move forward with that. But the initial discussion to bring this topic to the forefront should be centered around whether some of this stuff can even be done through the city solicitor and some of the other talk that has to go on. So I think that's more or less what the beginning of the discussion would be and I don't want to take up the whole thing with Clifton Larson's report that I disagree with a lot of the numbers in. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. This was my motion referred to the subcommittee. We're looking forward to the subcommittee meeting tomorrow for a conversation. As far as the CLA, I don't agree with a lot of the recommendations because of the lack of participation through multiple conversations with employees. They never submitted. So that's, really has no bearing as far as what the subcommittee is about tomorrow. As far as the HR implementation piece, that's a separate issue. So I would hope that the subcommittee meets tomorrow, begin the conversation. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's any extra cost to the city to bring someone from Clifton Larson here, I would be against it. You know, with that being said, you know, it's a 19-point report that I think everybody here has gone over multiple times. There was a presentation, I believe in 2021 by Clifton Larson, that, you know, if that wants to be reviewed, you know, we can watch that. But, you know, if they want to come here just to shed light on the report again for the second time, you know, so be it. But if there's any cost at all, I wouldn't be for it.
Any other comments or question? So for clarity, this, Mr. Manager, do you want to, you have a comment on this?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We will figure out if somebody is going to be here tomorrow, but I just wanted to make the council aware since it was a timing of the essence. We should still have it. We also have, we have that as well as the ARPA meeting tomorrow. So be bouncing to both of those. But I just wanted the council to know the expectation. We hope to have somebody from Clifton Larson there. Counselor Rook, just to answer that, I do not believe there is any cost on that or we weren't at least advised at that, at that point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So to the make of the motion, this being already done, we don't need to take a vote on this motion? It's, we can withdraw this motion? Is that okay by you?
I'd like to leave it on the record. Not that we need to vote on it, but.
You want to just leave on record as a, how would we, Mr. Clerk?
Just an unanswered motion.
Unanswered motion, okay. Unanswered motion on 12.7. Any other comments or question? Hearing none, we'll move to the next one. 12.8, Counselor Janess, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have proper department do a thorough cleanup in Kerewak Park prior to the Lowell Pride event on June 4th and 5th. I believe the motion speaks for itself, councilors?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Brief question on Kerewak Park.
Counselor Robinson?
I know when I worked for the city, it was a national park property that the city maintained or it's a city property that National Park maintained. It's either or because Lucy Larkham is similar. Lucy Larkham is owned by the National Park, but the city maintains. So I'm not sure, but Kerewak Park, does anyone know if National Park used to regularly maintain that area? I don't know if that's still the case, but maybe they can help out with the heavy lifting, cleaning aspect of it to get ready for Pride. Thank you.
Through, Mr. Manager, Madam Solicitor, do you have a response to that?
Kerewak Park, I believe, is our park. It had come to us via a taking, but I believe you're right that the National Park had been, right, helping out and assisting. So we can follow up through the manager's office and extending that out again.
You asked Counselor Robinson? Last motion of the night, 12.9, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager have proper department look into banning parking on one side of street from area of 37 June Street down to end of block. Any comment either, councilors? Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Robinson? Motion speaks for itself.
Briefly, I got a couple of residents up in that area, reached out. You have buses that come through. It gets very narrow with parking along that side of June there. So if you can have someone take a look at it and see if it's something that we might be able to correct. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Any announcements? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I just wanted to let folks know that tomorrow night at Warpin West at 7 o'clock, there is a fundraiser being held by the Lowell Pride Committee for the Pride event. So if anybody's around and wants to stop by, I know Counselor Robinson and myself will be there. Warpin West, 7 o'clock tomorrow night. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any announcement? Counselor Robinson?
I'd like to let everyone know Friday, May 13th at 9:00 a.m., 600 Lake View Ave. I believe it is a Lowell housing property. Lowell Conservation and Park Trust is planting a bunch of trees over there and I guess the public is welcome to attend, which is huge because, again, they're helping to break up some heat islands. In addition to, this Saturday at Gage Park from 11:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m., this is our first food truck festival in Centerville. And so the weather's going to be nice, come out. There should be food trucks there and the weather's going to be perfect, playground and everything. So two events coming up. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, just a quick note, you're receiving your patented summer schedule, which is for June, July, August, December, the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month to so you're aware of it and we've broadcast it out to the City Hall as well.
No other announcements? Motion adjourned by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Rook. On favor of the I, post say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Have a great night, everyone.